Well, so at this time, again, just to remind everybody that during the public hearings, when the board is going to be adding amounts to the budget, they need to be revealed during the public hearing, if not this public hearing, the next public hearing. So at this time, I don't know whether the board wants to go through the budget and have a discussion, or at least get partway through the budget before we move on to other agenda items.
What's your interest?
Are we doing the warrants as well?
It's listed, it's coming up.
It's an agenda item, but we could certainly talk about it now.
We'd probably best if we looked through that, I would imagine.
The only two things that I would like to add to what was on the warrant is the possibility of a -- money for the potential purchase of the church property and the costs associated with that, and also the potential for money for design for the town center building project.
Yes.
Just so those two are mentioned.
You're remoting one?
Well, yeah. Can we at least put placeholder amounts so that the public's aware?
More than a dollar? The design project, if we -- the only quote that we have right at the moment, because we haven't talked about this, is from AG Architects, and that was $130,000. And I think that's high. In terms of the church property, the only number we have is the counterproposal, which was $175,000. Talking with my trusted advisor in the back, who's talking to somebody else, the survey and the fees and stuff would be approximately $10,000, and legal is about $5,000. So at least 15 added to that, and whatever the cost would be for the demolition and/or removal. And we don't know what that is yet.
No, we don't know what was there.
So, other than that, the board has no other comments, questions, changes?
The only other thing that I would -- we're going to get a presentation in a little bit, but if those, in terms of the design warrant article doesn't pass, depending on what it is, we've got a presentation coming up about the Indiana code stuff. So if that doesn't pass, we should at least consider doing some, if not all, of these issues for Indiana code compliance on all the buildings in the town center.
And would you be looking for a separate warrant article with that, or would the board simply vote to take the money out of the town building reserve?
We could probably take it out of the existing funds at this time.
But, like, we haven't even had the presentation yet.
Yes.
From what the information that we're going to get presented, it's about $26,650 to do all of those particular items. So just so at least we mention it, because we want to do something with those.
Can we talk about Article 4? As you may recall, this was voted in last year by the New Hampshire Legislature, although at the time, we thought that they were going to make a change to the law, which I think they did, which is to allow municipalities who want to vote it in to do phase in. So I guess my first question is, is the board interested in putting this article in at all? And then secondly, are you interested in phasing it in or just make it $500, which is the current question.
And specifically, the change is, before they were very restrictive in terms of what the definition of veteran was, now this is just anybody that served?
Essentially.
But before, if you were in this conflict, there'd be service?
During the debates, yes. That's why this is called the All Veterans Tax Credit.
I'm personally interested in having it. I'm not interested in phasing it. I'm interested in doing it all at once and just be done with it.
And I agree. Which other articles?
I mean, the rest of them are relatively straightforward. We don't have any purchases this year, or proposed purchases this year, other than the fire command vehicles. And the information in the warrant article is what I received from the fire chief. Maybe one other note, that CIP in Article 14 recommended a deposit of $6,000 for the recreation capital reserve fund, and the recreation commission asked for $10,000. I don't believe any money was put into this fund last year.
Can I ask a question on 18? Do we have a map of the proposed area? Can Mr. Hunt can you speak to that? I'm not sure.
I know he does, because I saw it. I don't happen to have it literally. But it's a piece of land, and I think Hunt has certainly corrected. It's essentially, it's kind of behind the school, but it was part of the existing town forest.
But it's my understanding, most of the rest of the build property has an easement already on it?
The solid green color is the town forest currently under easement, and it goes beyond the margin of the -- and the area in question is the wooded area just to the right of the solid green.
This little section here? Okay. All right. So the reason it was left out for was?
There was a belief at the time that the town might have a use for that for future building, but that was before it was identified as containing significant wetlands, particularly a voral pool behind Massway School that is used regularly for educational purposes and wouldn't be buildable within that.
Is that where those, what is it, chestnuts or elm trees? Did you guys clear that with Randy?
No, the chestnuts are behind the safety conflicts.
Oh, like, back in here?
Oh, actually, off the --
Oh, off the --
Somewhere off.
Thank you.
I didn't want to try to show the entire town forest, because I wanted you to be able to see in detail what abuts this particular block, specifically the transfer station, Massway School, and the church.
Any interest at this time in going through this budget? We already started off, so we maybe just start at the top and go through it piece by piece, and then when we have questions, we can discuss it. Are you okay with that, Tom?
Absolutely.
I guess on the first page is, everybody has a budget sheet in front of them? Everybody else has a budget sheet? It doesn't mean it doesn't.
I had copies of those.
The board is selecting the budget issue. Next one is elections and registration? Do you have some questions?
I didn't have any issues. I just don't understand, if you look at it, for instance, the moderator salary goes up, the assistant moderator goes up to 400 from the year, and then the supervisor checklist goes up 500, and the ballot clerk go down by 1300. I just don't understand the reasoning behind all of that.
I can't explain why the ballot clerk would go down, but the other ones, there are more elections, I believe, this year than previous year. So therefore, more elections, more money. But I don't have the answers to the ballot clerk.
I believe that assistant moderator was paid out of the ballot clerk originally.
Oh, okay.
Is that what happened?
I think it's just, money is now in the proper places of where it's supposed to be.
Okay. So we move on at this point?
Yeah.
Just look at the town clerk tax collector. I don't hear any noises on the menu. Okay. Look at Juice Guy, you're a little --
I'm looking at the paper.
You're looking at what?
I'm looking at the paper.
Is that from financial administration? Make sure it's on the right page. Any comments on town administration?
No, I'm trying to figure out why not. That one's on the table.
Oh, it's just down there.
Dr. B., can you point me to which line has been changed? Because for some reason, I can't, uh...
Accounting Assistant Radio.
Oh, pretty.
Oh, okay, yep.
In terms of, I think you and I spoke about that?
Yep.
The difference is, how would you --
Yeah, thank you, sorry. I should have changed the way I did this. The difference is, what I had put in the budget is slightly higher than if you were to take the employee's hourly rate multiplied by the number of hours that we expect her to work every week. I just wanted to bump it up slightly in event that, from time to time, we might need her for more hours. Specifically, if the finance director is out, we might need her for a couple more hours. But that's the only, but that's why there's that difference.
Next one is IT expenses? Pretty quiet. Is that saying? Let you do it that way. Needing expenses? Personnel administration? Incomings from town administration?
No, I think the only difference is the reduction in the paid vacation amount. What I put in, I put in the budget if everybody were to take it.
Yes. Just in case.
Just in case. In planning and zoning, we receive the actual rate from Strattford County Regional Planning Commission, but for some reason, that's, I don't know, that's just not carried in the ABC budget. It's not much of a difference, but the dollar amount is actually $5,163.
What lines are they? Halfway down, yeah, 501, I got it. So you want to make the correction there?
I would like to change it to what the actual is on.
Okay. Don't they build them? So, residential improvement? Sheriff's property livelihood? Other general government?
Due to the way that the ABC puts their budget together, the additional $20,000 in the other general government is actually the contingency warrant article that comes out of the unassigned fund balance. It's really not a dollar amount in the operating budget, unless the board wants to keep $65,000 in what has been used as the -- so we'll, I'll put that back down to $45,000.
Yes. Police?
It looks like the ABC reduced the fee budget. Probably to reflect what's been actually spent in the past few years.
Dispatch?
Yeah, there had been some discussion, and certainly the police chief, who are these, going back to the line, who talked to this, but at the time, when we were putting the budget together, there was some discussion in Strattford County that they were going to fee for this, but decided to keep it at the 6,000, I think the 6,712 level. And we just continue to talk about possibly changing the way that they charge for this service.
So what do you recommend?
I guess, absent any additional information from the police chief of Strattford County, I would recommend putting it back in the 6,712.
The sheriff had asked for a 10% increase. And the Strattford Chiefs, 90% of us told them that you can't just, we've already done our budgets. We all agree that there does need to be an increase. There hasn't been an increase, I think about five years. And we know that equipment is needing to be replaced and things like that. So what was discussed at Chief's meeting is that he'll do a 10% increase next year to get them to where they need to be, but then do like a 1.5 to 2% every year, rather than waiting five years and hitting everybody with a one big increase. Just, you know, you understand staffing, everything goes up. So there won't be any increase for this year, for the next fiscal year, it will go up. But we'll have plenty of advanced warning.
So there will not be an increase in fiscal '19?
Thank you. Amber Lince, I think that's pretty straightforward. Presentation by Mr. Cool. Our department?
I believe you also see the same decrease in the heat line.
Good. We did talk about that earlier. Total cost? Actually, I'm hoping to put that to a full timeline, so...
Okay. Have that discussion now?
Yeah, we should have that discussion. I think there's enough activity going on, a lot of things are happening, and there's opportunities here. Want to make sure we hold out for ourselves as best we can. I agree.
I would be against it.
Two out of three, we'll move forward with that. So you recoporate that? So that goes a fullback to this one?
Yes. So the estimated figures that I had put together for the ABC, the wage line would go to $52,500. And then there was the additional costs that we showed in the personnel line.
So you get about $25,000, maybe less.
That will show up in other questions.
Emergency management? Highway's okay? Yeah. Transfer station? Solid waste is present. I guess we better get to the solid waste at some point.
I mean, there were changes made. I don't know whether we want to talk about that, or...
Which particular one?
The first line, end of solid waste, the MSW and multi-waste. The current budget is $72,000. The department had asked for $84,000, and the ABC bumped it down to $80,000. And that, I think, is based on some actual figures that we calculated for what it should cost us to dispose.
So we'll go with the ABC?
Yeah.
Is this south, west border shouldn't want to help this area?
Southeast border shouldn't want to.
Animal control?
So the only comment I have on this is, as you may recall, Strattford, the Wheels on Wheels is a new program, and we had talked about whether the board is going to want to just put it in the operating budget, or make it a special warrant article in its first year.
I'd leave it where it is.
Yeah. General assistance? Work location? Parks and recreation?
I believe the reduction is, as Ms. Kim said, in effect the ABC's recommendation to not use the assistant library director to hold on.
Library assistant?
Am I allowed to speak? It's a public hearing.
Please, go forward.
Hi, Reit Piper, library director. We're trying to do a couple different things here. Assistant director. We have a personnel bylaw that covers the library's staff, and it's been amended over the years, changed. We have a history of that. We have a budget, no, I'm going to rephrase this. Sorry, have a bath, cold.
That's okay.
In it, benefits have, our full-time employees are those who work 35 or more hours a week. And in our bylaw, it says that if you are considered full-time at 35 hours of work per week, then you're entitled to full-time benefits. That's been fulfilled partly, about four years ago, when the assistant director became acting director, that position was then recognized as full-time in order to get retirement benefits. That's one portion of our bylaw. The rest of it has continued until now as not being funded. So we're attempting to bring our full-time, we consider full-time person up so that they would be allowed to get benefits, full medical benefits. They get retirement already, but that's it. That's what, my understanding, the history of this was at this point, that's what they determined. So we're trying to bring that position back so that it fits in with our personnel bylaws. So we had a couple choices. We could try to meet the town's bylaw, which says 40 hours is considered full-time, or we could keep this employee at 35, which is our bylaw that says 35 is full-time. So that's where the suggestion is. If you want to save $5,000 on the salary line, you can leave this position as the library's full-time position, 35 hours, but you still need to fund the medical benefit side to fulfill our bylaw requirements. And that bylaw has been in place since, at least that picture portion, since at least 2011. Was reaffirmed again in 2013, no changes. And then reaffirmed again this year without any changes. So that's why we were, either need to bring this person up to 40 hours a week so it matches the town's personnel bylaw, or the better choice is to leave it at the library's personnel bylaw, which says 35 hours or more is considered full-time, would then get full-time benefits. So it's a $5,000 salary line, it's about a $22,000 auxiliary payroll. And if you notice our budget this year, we actually are showing those things where on our, there's an auxiliary PR expense of $47,000, which was our request. And that's normally shown in the town budget, rather than in a hard-line item. So that's, that's our request.
Thank you very much. Cultural purposes? Culture and recreation? Conservation commission?
Just one clarification. I believe when Mr. Hunt spoke, he said that the request was $5,500, and of course, it's actually $5,300.
Yes, I see it. And then the rest, bond issues? Yep. Okay, I don't want to discuss bond issues. Go ahead, please.
Ann Taffin, conservation commission. I also just heard that, I was unaware that there would be a zero of the budget for the conservation commission. The conservation commission is an extremely active group in the town, and devotes hundreds of hours to maintaining decent boundaries, to do handerships every year. We have been, it's been on our properties, we are doing invasive plant control, we work with many other groups in getting the work done. There's numerous public programs that are done every year. So to just drop the commission, I think, is a serious omission, and is almost a slap in the face to the people that are working so hard and have been working so hard. It is an extremely active group, very dedicated group, very knowledgeable group. So I hope that you would consider something in the budget for the conservation commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you recall what they have?
Oh, yes, I have the paper ready here.
I thought you might.
Their ending balance at the end of 2015 was a little under $7,000. The ending balance after fiscal '16 was a little under $10,000. The ending balance after '17 is almost $14,000, and through October 18th of this year, they have $19,000. So, and some of that money I know is in a special fund, but just like we've done with the other commissions that have large amounts of money, specifically, one of them is the Heritage Commission, if they're not going to use it, I'm not going to give them any more money until they do use it. And I am the first to acknowledge that the conservation commission is very active. I'm totally surprised in all this stuff that they do. So don't take it as a slap in the face.
Thank you.
Take it as, you've got a lot of money in your account, you don't seem to be using it, it keeps going up. So if you're not using it, why should we give you more?
Okay.
So it's a valid question. And I know you guys are working on the Joe Ford thing, but if you don't know how much that's going to cost, that is my particularization. That's only me.
Okay, thank you.
So that's my particular perspective on that. And just like the Heritage Commission, they haven't asked for money for two years because they get a significant amount of cash. So it's not a slap in the face to them either. It's, you know, we keep giving you money, but you don't seem to use it. Not that you don't do good works, but bring that balance down a little bit. That's my, I don't know what the others have been going on. If you want to see the numbers. Those are solutions. And I am the first to acknowledge that the Conservation Commission is very active. I'm totally surprised in all this stuff that they do. So, don't take it as a slap in the face.
Thank you.
Take it as, you've got a lot of money in your account, you don't seem to be using it, it keeps going up. So, if you're not using it, why should we give you more? So, it's a valid question. And I know you guys are working on the Joe Ford thing, but if you don't know how much that's going to cost, that, that is my particular issue. That's only me.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's my particular perspective on that. And just like the Heritage Commission, they haven't asked for money for two years because they get a significant amount of cash. So, it's not a slap in the face to them either. It's, you know, we keep giving you money, but you don't seem to use it. Not that you don't do good works, but bring that balance down a little bit. That's my, I don't know what the others have been going on.
If you want to see the numbers. Next time we meet, is there any, we can do reconsideration a couple of these?
Oh, sure.
So, I'm going to make a note at this point, we did hear people's pleas at this time. This is the first time cut through the budget and the next meeting, which will be when, Julie?
I think it's a week from the sixteen, sorry.
Sixteen. Gives the opportunity for us to like what we've just heard from the public and with respect to volunteers and departments, obviously, we can make changes. So, you please do not fall into debt here, Ms. Brier.
John Tappin, one eighty-seven Steppingstones Road. Just have a simple question about the wording of some of the warrant articles. Almost all of those special warrant articles are putting money into trusts or reserve funds to say, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of acts to be deposited into. But number fifteen says, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars from general pension to be deposited into. And I just wondered, is there any good reason?
There is no good, there is no good reason for that.
There's a good set of eyes for you.
There's another on Julie too, where it says you want seventeen, but...
Oh, I already, I actually thought I fixed that. The word said fourteen and the number said seven or something like that. I probably fixed that.
Any other comments or questions about the budget at this point? Anybody else? Well, far as that part, I'm going to close the budget hearing. Thank you very much. Julie Glover, Town Minister.
So, we went over the warrant. At this time, if anyone has any questions about the default budget, I would ask the board, except for that budget as presented and designed. It's a slight reduction over the current proposed budget. So, you want a slight...
Yeah, I'll move to accept this fourth question and present it. Scotty? Well, the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, lots of cheers, thank you. Actually, about the warrant, I just want to go through these a little bit. Ms. Rossi, can you explain Article two and three to me, please?
So, I'm pretty sure that's the planning board of warrant articles. So, when the, the state law changed last June, stating that towns had to allow accessory dwelling in apartments, minimum of seven hundred square feet, two bedrooms. The law said that the town couldn't say which side had to be owner, that the primary unit had to be owner-occupied. So, this is just correcting it, correcting it to match the law. Still has to be voted on by the planning board, but I had to get a draft, which is next Thursday night, I have to get a draft for you guys prior to the planning board. And that's all it is, just making it current, both regulations on the board and building regulations currently of law.
Okay, thank you. Couple of articles. Could you speak to Article sixteen, Town Minister?
So, again, the town established the Public Safety Special Duty Revolving Fund in two thousand and eleven, and we've modified it at least once since, once since, possibly twice. The language of the time didn't reflect the ability to actually spend money out of that account for anything other than paying the officers and the ancillary costs. So, I think it was either last year, year before, or it could have been three or four years ago. I know fairly recent, relatively recently, we changed it to allow for the purchasing of equipment by the police department. And we had, have talked since about also allowing the fire department to spend money for equipment out of it because we also put money in based on work that the fire department does.
Thank you. And also, could you explain Article seventeen?
Yeah, that one's a little more complicated. So, Ian, without pulling out my notes, and John Tappin and Bill Hall could certainly speak if I, you speak. But in two thousand and eleven, the town voted to establish the Conservation Land Stewardship Trust Fund with the idea of having it funded by timber sales on town-owned property. At the time, there was no dollar amount, it was really simply the establishment of the fund. Subsequent to that, the town found out that in order to take money from timber sales and put it into this fund, there has to be a warrant article that says the dollar amount. So, in two thousand and fourteen, we harvested some timber from the Log Jones Forest. I do have the number. Just saying it was a little bit less than four thousand dollars, either thirty-four hundred, thirty-five hundred, thirty-nine hundred, something like that. But we can't put it into that fund without a separate warrant article. So, the fund has, the money has just essentially been sitting in the unassigned fund by one since we received it in two thousand and fourteen.
So, it's there already?
So, it's there already. Oh, yeah, it's right there, thirty-four hundred dollars. I wasn't looking down. I said thirty-four hundred, first. Yeah, so that is to put money from sale in two thousand and fourteen into this fund.
And could somebody explain to me what the stewardship trust fund is for? Thank you.
The intent at the time the fund was established was to have a repository for monies collected from timber harvests on town-owned lands to offset costs associated with managing those lands. There are oftentimes activities that have to be done that are purely an outflow of cash with no inflow. And so, the thinking has been that it would be desirable to have a trust fund that could be drawn upon when there was a need to do some management that was going to cost money rather than producing any revenues.
Questions?
No.
Bill, is this, is this a capital reserve fund or is it a real trust fund?
Expendable trust fund.
And the agents, where are the agents?
I agree to, expenditures from this fund shall be made at the discretion of the Conservation Commission and appointing the Board of Selectmen as agent to expend.
And so, if you have other harvest funds, are they going to potentially go into this fund as well, Bill? And how do they get in there? Is that...
It would require separate warrant articles like this one in the future.
Okay. And it can't be done, I think that was the problem the first time, because you can't automatically just because you don't know the amount.
Correct.
Thanks.
Couple of things. We want to talk about putting some of these warrants in, from the on-site fund balance. Like, how much is the on-site fund balance?
Just going to mention that.
That's good.
Although we do not have the two thousand and seventeen audit report, our auditors did prepare what DRA calls NS five-three-five, which I guess you might call it, an estimated audit report. And so, that was finished in October, and at that time, there was two million, four hundred sixty-one thousand and twenty-two dollars in the on-site fund balance. But the board voted to expend four hundred thousand to put towards the tax rate, leaving an estimated balance of two million, sixty-one thousand, twenty-two. The town's fund balance policy calls for maintaining the fund at a level of ten percent of appropriations.
Which is?
Well, according to the DRA, at the time we set the tax rate, ten percent of our appropriations would be one million, five hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars.
So, we're not that far off. We're pretty close in terms of...
That's a billion. And the total of the deposits to capital is four hundred and twenty thousand?
Oh, suppose? I think that's about right.
Yeah, I think that's probably right.
Someone had my sheets, like, you know.
Oh, someone has your sheet. I'd still like to take in consideration maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars of it anyways. Two hundred and fifty thousand. Well, I was thinking about Article seven. And Article eight, what you make this article about? And maybe Article ten.
Let's see if it's seven, sixteen. It's a hundred and fifteen and one fifty-five. Seven hundred and seventy? Seven hundred and seven thousand total.
I'd rather not. I would consider it for the church property and the subsequent expenses of that. I'd rather leave it for something that's not necessarily time alone, at the one time.
Well, then I suggest we don't do anything because I don't think we're ready to say yet we're going to necessarily do that. That's why I feel it should go through, the funds are there for these purposes and church property is something we're reaching for.
I'm, I'm okay with it, really, yeah.
I'm okay with what?
No, I'm okay with moving the money into those. I mean, we can...
Please, can we put that down for consideration? So, there's Article seven. What did I say?
Article eighteen.
So, eighteen, ten. The reason I chose those, the pretty common ones, and they usually get funded every time they went out, because anybody's got enough exactly. I remember Mr. Murphy, it was a high pusher for that ten percent with the... What's your mind? Ten percent of the overall...
Oh, yeah, yeah, that.
We all agree on that.
Yeah, we all agree. I'm just not interested in using those particular articles.
Okay. Anything else?
Can we talk about nineteen and twenty? I think we could, we've got the information in terms of buying it outright. As far as I can tell, it's a little bit cheaper if we do the lease purchase in Omaha, but when we buy it out, it doesn't seem, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but the calculated in terms of revenue doesn't include our offset expenses as well, which comes out to be way more advantageous for the town of Omaha.
To buy it outright?
Yeah, because...
Oh, yeah.
So, I, I don't know if we even want to consider that, but that's not why I want to bring these up. I had a conversation with our learned Chief of Police in the back, who I guess is very good at building maintenance, because he brought up something that I hadn't thought about, which I think makes sense. At some point, this roof has to be replaced. And if we have solar panels on it, that's going to be one hell of a mess. So, one of the things that he and I spoke about, and I don't know if he's in favor, so I'm not going to say he is, but I would be in favor of, say, people not putting them on the roof, but putting them on the ground someplace. So, they won't have to deal with those particular roof issues. I don't know what the cost differential for that has been, but I think that's something we should consider, because if we put panels up there, then we have to replace the roof, have to physically get the panels off, replace the roof and then put them back again, I don't know how expensive that's going to be, but it's going to be a kind of a mess. And I know certain places like Buffalo House, and so people across the road put them on the ground, which they're easier to maintain, I would think. So, I don't know if there's a possibility of finding those energy companies, take a look at that. See if possible, you can find a place around here that you could possibly install them on the ground, or it's a...
Well, then, not enthusiastic William Croft with a warrant at this time, if we don't know where these panels be placed. I happen to agree with you. I was putting panels on groups, they're not enthusiastic, they need to begin with because of the maintenance issues. Unless the groups were designed for initially knowing you're going to put them in there, so it makes a difference.
Well, the panels aren't there yet. So, one of the things, if I remember right, the solar company said is that before the panels are installed, they will, one, check the structure of the roof to see if it can hold the weight of the panels. And, two, they recommended that if you had an aged roof, that the shingles would be replaced prior to them installing the panels, so, so that would not, if you would come up in the middle of the age somewhere. I don't disagree with looking at whether we can find a ground location warrant because that might allow us to put in additional panels, which would allow us to offset, to offset some more of our electrical costs. So, I think it's a good idea to do that. I think it's a prudent thing to do. But the, they would not, as I understand it, they would not just install the panels on the roof without first addressing those two issues. The cost of fixing the roof, we're going to incur that at some time or another anyway.
No. Are you taking questions from the floor? Not yet, but I will.
The way the Article nineteen is written, it would allow us to put them on the ground.
Twenty is... Do the structural engineering first.
I guess that's not the location.
Now, you don't necessarily have to do Article twenty if you do Article nineteen. This was just a way to create a new capital reserve fund so that if you were going to purchase it in six years, you already have the money savings. Or, you could do it out of the town building capital reserve.
How much would that be? What was it costing?
Hundred and thirty-something.
Knowing that would be coming up...
I think it's about eighty, the buyout right now is estimated at about eighty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, eighty-two.
In year six.
Whole project was one guy's here.
Yeah, I know, it's...
But...
One thirty-six.
But, it would be higher than that if we put the panels on the ground, because my understanding is it's more expensive to put the panels on the ground.
We got some specials?
I just want to add that, to what Julie said.
Oh, you got to come up with a podium.
Okay. We'll run in, I'm one of them.
Thank you.
Organizers of the project. And Karen Kennizaro from Revision, like Julie said, would be, it's more expensive to put it in the ground because you got, you gotta jam in these huge posts to keep them. And also, she talked about possible fencing. And also, you have to dig a trench from, assuming it's not, it's a distance from the building, you'll have to dig a trench to get the wires to the building. So, those are three, three extra expenses. As far as the roofing goes, that was one of the first things she asked me was, how old was the roof? And I believe it's about fifteen years old?
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three?
Two thousand and three, yeah.
You could go either way. You could replace the shingles that are going underneath the solar panels, but she did say that the solar panels actually pretty much protect the shingles. They, they extend the light of the shingles quite a bit, so... But that's, I think that's something. I taught, I spoke to a man named Rob Wolfchuck, who was one of the organizers of the Brentwood Solar Project, and he said that Revision worked with the... and he said that Revision worked with the town quite a bit and they picked up a few extra expenses. I think they paid for some of the trenching that wasn't in the PPA and some. So they're a pretty good company to work with and I would expect that they'd be willing to work with us on that kind of thing. And like Karen says, it's a fourteen-year-old building, you would expect that. I mean, because they put solar collectors on regular houses all the time. But they, after a contract is signed, they bring their engineers in to determine if it's possible. But maybe they could send someone in to get a little more sense. We've had, I had some contractors come in from a company called Resilient Buildings Group to look at the insulation aspects, and they thought structurally it looked pretty decent, just inside.
We want to get something right.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Could we have some reports here from the fire team who had expressed some concerns to me about putting the panels on the roof?
If we request the police chief first, because he's had his hand up longer than the.
Oh, yeah.
You can stand the line.
Come on, Randy.
Come on, Randy.
Don't we have a good idea?
The department heads got together to discuss this. Several days prior to our meeting, the roofers were actually here, putting some metal roof along this edge. As you're aware, we have a lot of ice damming problems with this roof the way it is now. So in preparation for that meeting, I spoke with the roofer, told him what the proposal was, and his concern obviously was the age of the shingles at this time and replacing them after. There's a fee for the company to come back out to take the panels and everything off so you can re-shingle. He also expressed his concern about the peaks and valleys that we have. This is a difficult roof line, and he said it's ripe for water damage. So his suggestion would be if you're going to go the route of putting solar panels on the roof, to metal roof it and be done with it. That would help with our issues of the snow damming up, the ice dams, things of that nature. So I asked him, I said, just so I could have some information, ballpark figure on putting a metal roof on here. He said around sixty thousand dollars labor materials. So that's our biggest concern, and that's why we came up with possibly putting them on the hill out back here, because we have enough issues with this roof as it is and have for quite some time. Thank you. Archie?
I just wanted to say I agree with Tom. I mean, the biggest issue was, I saw in the proposal, a lot of the panels are going to be on that side of the building. That's where we have all the leakage, all the water leakages into his bay currently. And then everything from all of the roofs comes into that section. I mean, the water comes off so bad that it's actually grinding away the pavement in that corner. We've had huge ice chunks take up the meter for this building in the past. So that's just some of the concerns that we have from the fire aspect of everything. I've taken a couple plus on the solar panels. I don't know the records of, I don't know how many fires there are because of the solar panels. But a concern from the fire department is that they never turn off, the panels never turn off. If we had a fire in this building, there's no way to turn those panels off. We can disconnect the power coming down into the building or into the power lines, but those panels are always live, so we can't get up onto the roof, we can't do anything with them. So that's a concern that I have. And then just having the space on the roof line so that we could get up there to bring them down from the peak a little bit and from the sides of the building, so we could have a good space around them, just walk around them. But I agree with Tom, if we can get them in the fields, I know Brentwood has done that, I know other places have done that. Durham just did that in Packers Falls. We did a class with them with Durham Fire, we went down there. But according to the company, when we met with them, it's just kind of let them burn and call them, and then they come down and try and shut everything down for us. So there's not much we can do if we have a fire with them.
Thank you. Another option we might be able to go to is, since this building, I believe, it might be a co-op. I believe the transfer station too is a co-op. You got room and the transfer station sits higher. So you also got plenty of room on the side before you go in, plus we're closer to the poles. So that's another alternative you can look into. If you decide to build the town hall, it's going to be on co-op side anyway, so.
It doesn't have to be an alternative, though. I mean, we still should look hard at what we could do solar-wise at the transfer station.
Yep. Next one, bring it up.
You know, I actually looked at the transfer station roof on Google Earth. It's exactly southwest, which is pretty good for solar. The roof is a little bit shallow, but if you wanted to make them free-standing, that would also be, and the fencing is already there. So just to mention that.
Thank you. So the question that, I guess, go on and re-privature, let's put that on the table. But it does, the way it looks now, the way it's written, it is totally open. It could be underground, it could be on the roof line, it could be anywhere. It doesn't say when this would stop either. It doesn't say it has to start the next, to get in the next budget season or anything along the line. It's just asking permission and consider us, talk about licensure and move in that direction. So there is a pretty open floor interest. So I understand your concerns, I have to not be enthusiastic about putting things on the roof, but we do have the field that's right next door. And with respect to the transfer station in the direction.
If we want to leave it as open and as possible, we may want to put language in there that includes Stevens Field, because if you say public safety complex, people don't think that that means Stevens Field. So I think that they have been talking about the hill behind this building rather than, not that we couldn't do it.
If we could tweak it so that it's.
Property near around the public safety, something very.
Adjacent, adjacent property.
Yeah.
So which particular, because I know the town's split between co-op and. So which of our buildings is on which?
The traditional town center is Eversource and highway, transfer station, and the public safety complex are the co-op.
So Article twenty is dependent on nineteen.
You don't have to, you don't have to do twenty.
Because if we do the licensure and we actually start moving forward, then we get asked to build it for next year. So I think we should pull twenty. Okay, let's pull that.
Could we, in terms of, because we mentioned whatever the town's, the town building maintenance fund, you could use that fund to pay that off, though, could you? I don't think that's.
With the town, that's, I think it's hard about three ninety thousand.
Purchasing the array.
Town building capital reserve.
Yes, because I don't think that would.
That's how the building capital expense? Didn't we ask, didn't we ask the trustees or anyone to that?
So if we were to purchase the solar array, how would we, could we take it out of the town building capital reserve?
John Tappin, Trustees of Trust Funds, bookkeeper and chair. We have not answered that question. The most recent question, like it, was about the lights.
Yeah, to it.
To which we said that if there's an analysis that says it's an improvement, then it's a capital improvement. On the electrical panels, we've never considered it at all.
So could we, would you ask them, would you, would you? Is that, because that's an energy improvement for the.
Yes, we, we're meeting this Friday for the other questions that have been asked. So I will add that to our agenda.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question about twenty-one? How did we get to twenty thousand? That's a percentage, isn't it? Because the budget keeps going up and we have to.
The first year we did it, it was, I think, thirty-four, thirty-six thousand, because it can't be more than one percent of your operating budget. And then in subsequent years, I don't think there was any magic to twenty thousand. It was probably based on the experience that we had the first year and how much we spent out of it. It could certainly be less than twenty thousand.
Because so far, we haven't really spent anything out of it.
Not, we've had, I think, one expense this year.
Does you want to do any further discussion about, what was it again, the library was requested, hundred thousand?
Library trustees are, would be very pleased if the board would put an article on the warrant to put one hundred thousand dollars into the Lee Library building capital reserve. No, because I won't receive the email from them today. Again, just see where, I don't know whether there was a presentation, you take the ID for it.
Not that I know of.
But it was, it just was not, it's not in the capital improvement plan right now.
So they put in, they have, which front were they wanting in?
Well, it used to be called the Lee Library Community Center.
Oh, okay.
But it only changed the name.
Not the one they.
Not the old one, the newer one.
Anything else in terms of what, how much is in it now?
It's like, almost four hundred thousand?
We're keeping John busy here.
Remember what time we're putting a hundred thousand dollars here over seven years at that point?
I understand, but that doesn't go on forever, does it?
Well, it could go on forever until you build the building, then you take the money out of it.
The intent at the time of the original warrant article was to put a hundred thousand dollars in it for five years.
Correct.
John Tappin, again, Trustees of Trust Funds. Four hundred thousand dollars is what was put in, because it was done for four years. Money was taken out, it has earned interest since. And as of the end of November, it had three hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-five.
Plus really the sixty thousand, which is in the other fund, which should really be in that.
Correct, and that is another item on our agenda. That's right.
We should just move it and just be done with it, because then everybody has to remember that there's sixty thousand in a fund that shouldn't be in the other fund.
Oh, to move it, yes.
Would the board consider having a warrant article move for one fund together?
Well, then, just be. To delete the other fund.
Mr. Tappin doesn't seem to have any. Don't do that.
Delete that other fund. Let's get rid of some of these trust funds.
Well, as a trustee of trust funds, you can move things around all you want. But you, as a citizen observing what happens in voting, you don't know what would be approved and what would not be approved. The question that was asked of us a couple of years ago, a few years ago, about the sixty thousand dollars was, could it be used for the library community center to be built at the brick of property? And we determined that in fact that sixty thousand dollars could be used for that. Meaning that once we made that decision, that if you presented us with a request for reimbursement for that sixty thousand dollars, we were approved for that purpose. And now that the library community center fund has been changed to the library building, we have not actually answered the question of, did that change our answer on the sixty thousand? Wouldn't the sixty thousand, wouldn't it change purposes also? It would seem to me like the easiest would be that if we vote Friday to say, yes, it did, then we've got the sixty thousand in a place where you can use it for that library building purpose. And that would be more sure than writing warrant articles to try to take money out of one and put it into another.
I'm okay with that answer. I'm okay with that.
Leaving it for record, yes, yes, knowing that we could use it if we had to.
If they can make the determination possibly on Friday that it's still able to be used for that purpose. Can we have a discussion about the proposed warrant article to use, put money in for the design? The cost and expenses?
Yes.
Because we haven't really spoke about that yet. The AG Architects proposal, I don't know if we wanted to, to bruise that a little bit more, but they had money to do designs for all the particular proposed building changes and also fifteen thousand for construction manager. Someone who could come in that would not be bidding on the project, to come in and give us that particular perspective. That was something that was suggested by Mr. Goodile. I think some of the stuff in there is a little bit more than what we need, so maybe we go with less. But we haven't spoken about that in terms of what it would, we've tasked the committee to get information out there, which they're in the process of doing, but the second part of it is asking the taxpayers if they're interested in pursuing that particular avenue.
And which, when we went after the stuff in the brick of property, what was enough to support it at that time?
In terms of for the.
Well, looking at for construction issues and.
That was one billion, it was, I don't know, thirty-some thousand? I don't remember what it was.
Forty-some, fifty-some, I'm trying.
I don't remember what it was.
Can I, can I just look into this and dig out what we did years ago and for the next meeting draft a warrant article and?
Yeah, I think we definitely should move forward with it, we just got to get the right amount. But I think the figure you have now is a little high.
Yep.
And that could be cut back at the moment.
Well, let me, let me, I'm a little confused. This time around, if all we're asking for is for approval to spend X amount of money to develop more detailed plans, is that right or wrong?
That's the thought.
That's the thought.
That's the thought. Because right now, we have something from AG Architects that the committee, the facilities committee, developed in terms of what is being proposed out there. So we don't have any plans, we don't have any schematics, we don't have any elevations, we don't have any models. And it's thought that for somebody to vote on those particular things, they need to see something. Because right now, it's an idea, we've got some kind of like rough plans in terms of what it's supposed to be. We've got kind of a site plan of the whole thing, but nothing in terms of detail. Mr. Stevens took it a step further with at least with the town hall building, to show, you know, what possibly we could do. But I think for the voter to get a good idea of what they're getting for their money, we need to go this extra step and give them some specific plans, not down to like mechanicals and wiring and stuff like that, but high-level.
So where, then it's the following season, if you, that we make a decision as to whether we're going to purchase this property and build the building? Where's the decision to purchase it?
That's a.
We'll get to that next, that's on my list.
Oh, that's on your list.
So this is just the design part. So the idea would be that we ask for money for those particular things. In the subsequent year, we go through the process of figuring out what the space looks like, how big it is, where the offices are located, what the outside looks like, what the finish levels are. So we can get a good number, so when we come back next March, March of two thousand and nineteen, or later session, two thousand and nineteen, we have more concrete information to show the people. In terms of, this is what the building looks like, this is the floor plan, this is how much it costs.
And this is the barn that we're looking for.
Yes, if that's.
So at what point in this process do we address the current town hall and the fact that it needs work?
That's what this whole next.
Rome is burning. I mean, you know, we've got to start doing something on that building. We have just got to start doing something on that building.
Yes.
As, as I said, we're spending money, we're two years down the road, we haven't put a shovel in the ground yet. So I would really.
Really, you're only two years down the road, you're like ten years down the road, you're still in the.
Well, no, we're thirteen years ahead of it, I mean.
Thirteen.
But I'm taking it from here and saying, here's how much more we got to travel before we even put a shovel in the ground. And I would really like us to come up with a plan for the town hall. Because it's not getting any better. Okay.
All right, the next piece.
The church property piece.
Yes.
The latest counter proposals we have from them is for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. We can talk about funding sources, in terms of where that could come from. We have an expense for removing it from the site, depends on what that is, demolition removal or somebody coming in just to take it away. And also to deal with any hazardous waste that are on the property at the moment. In terms of transfer costs, there's going to be costs to do. In terms of transfer costs, there's going to be costs to do the lot land adjustment legal, we have to have a survey, and those are about fifteen thousand dollars for all that.
But a hundred and seventy-five doesn't necessarily include any cost for the parsonage, right? That's, that is to purchase the land and the parsonage.
Right, that's nothing to fix it, or-
Or move it, or tear it down, or, 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 right?
It's just the transit.
That, that could be a real surprise to us.
In terms of-
In terms of tearing it down and moving it, if it's got hazardous materials.
Yeah, that's, that's the part that I don't necessarily have any information, we have a tour tomorrow.
All right.
There's a gentleman coming, that's going to give us a quote in terms of what that cost would be.
Now, my understanding is, is that the historical committee has now declared this significant, is that, am I right or wrong?
This, Heritage Commission?
Heritage Commission, I'm sorry.
They find it, they find it, they have, find it of historical value, but they value getting the land for further town purpose, town use, to be of a higher value than the building.
If, well, you know, if that could, they could change that, right? I mean, they are saying, they, originally, when we started this conversation, it was said, the Heritage Commission has said, there's no issue with the building, they're not worried about it, it's not a historical building, et cetera, et cetera, and we preceded them based on, because that was one of the glitches that could occur. Right? And now, all of a sudden, the Heritage Commission met and has sent out a piece of paper that said they do consider it, as I interpret, a significant historical building to lead, and they want to either tear it down and move it, or do something, but there's no discussion about where the monies for that would come from.
That would be part of this whole thing.
But it's not moving a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
No, it would be, because that's the part of this that we're going to get from the people that are visiting tomorrow, in terms of quote for that. And I don't know how much that is going to be. That's one of the things that we spoke about, in terms of that's the unknown, that we need to find out what it is.
So, in the interim, then, we would pay a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the church, and we would own another building, plus this piece of property.
Yes.
That's exactly.
And that would be our baby, right?
Well, you'd have to have the other fifteen thousand as well, for the transfer and legal costs and things like that, survey. And that's an estimate.
Plus the unknown number for-
Demolition.
Either demolition, or hazardous material abatement, or whatever it's going to do. So it's-
I'm not trying to beat anybody up, I just want to remind you, what Barrington went through on their town hall was a hundred and fifty to two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar price tag, because they found asbestos. So I just-
That's what this gentleman is coming to do, that's his business, so. The other thing we discussed is in terms of what kind of guarantee they give us.
Yeah.
So he should be able to go through the building and give us an idea of what we're looking at. The other thing that he brought up is mercury, is there any mercury in the building? So, he's, that's what he does.
Okay.
That's what they do. And I think that's questions we can ask him tomorrow when we talk.
And if these, if those things are found out, don't forget, this is an offer, we can still go back and negotiate, saying these things will have to be taken care of.
But if, if the, if the decision-
The price was wrong.
If the decision on the building, on this property, is a no by the voters, we own, we own the land and we own the building. Right? Well, we're going to buy it before there's any decision by the voters to say, yeah, let's go ahead and-
No, no, no. It's going to go to a warrant.
It's going to go to a warrant. So the voter is going to decide, one should revise the property in the building.
Okay.
And then we'll move on. And then they will also, we should also, we will also know how much it costs to remove the building and or demolish it, and the transfer costs.
But when is the decision on whether to do, it's, there's two options. There's two options, right? So until the voters make that decision, in March.
In March.
In March.
If the, if the voters say, we don't want to legitimize the property or anything whatsoever, then we have an option against it, a Stevens bill. However, I look at this as an opportunity to expand the town property, and we're not going to give any other options at this point. We tried to go one way, a while back, we didn't make it, so now we're going to go the other way.
Okay.
But I do understand you're considering-
I'm going to say my last line, then. My last line is, we keep saying how we need to buy land for the town, and when we look in that direction, it's okay, but when we look this way and look at the banister property, we just say, no, there's no way. And that just does not make sense to me, I'm sorry.
No, you've got a comment?
I have, just put it out. David Meeker, Wagonfall, so, I, I'm not really authorized to speak for the Heritage Commission at all, but I just want to clarify the situation based on the current thinking, I think, from the Heritage Commission. And that was that, there's a lot of options for the old parsonage to be moved off, so to other people destroy, dismantle, all those. And the Heritage Commission just recognized that it is a historical building, that gives it options, but that they, the feeling was that they just wanted some time to be able to determine what the best option would be, and to, with some kind of fixed time date for having it removed from the property. That's the current thinking, we haven't had a meeting to discuss that particular issue, but that's kind of the Heritage Commission meeting, and I just, of course, I wanted to also say that I really support buying the church property, because the plans that are in for the restoration of the old town hall, or the meeting room and place like that, is going to be really handicapped if we don't have more parking, we don't have a place for the septic field and things like that.
Thank you, Dave.
Just one other, I don't know, it's going to be a while, a comment on that, my understanding is that the Heritage Commission is requesting of the board that if the purchase go forward, that they have until June of two thousand nineteen to do something with the building.
That's just the request.
And I don't know whether that's just, whether that means have until June of two thousand nineteen to determine what's going to be done, or do actually have whatever's going to be done, done.
Let me tell you, read it again, you know it's going to happen. The latest statement I know was that it would be removed from the property by a date certain, and one of the dates suggested was what Julie mentioned, but the, the understanding I have is that it would be gone, not, not, but just have the time period to determine what the best alternative is.
Thank you.
Because logistically, if you think about it, if we bring this back to the voter in March two thousand nineteen, we're not going to do anything until July anyway, so that's just a busy day. The other thing in terms of reference to the Heritage Commission is, there's a gentleman for the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance going to be with us tomorrow, looking at specifically the old building itself, and if he has any contacts in terms of somebody that would come and take it away, or what we could do with it. But that's what he's there for, so. He's there for gaining information, talking to us a little bit in terms of what the possibilities are, because he has contacts throughout the region, in terms of maybe somebody's been saying, hey, I'm looking for eighteen seventy-three parsonage, I just can't climb one, put on this piece of land. You never can tell, you never can tell, so.
I hope so.
I hope so.
Anything else on this, though?
No.
Ever? Nothing but. Anything else, Julie, please?
Okay, I've got a hand up. Please.
So, we're still in the budget public case?
Yeah, I closed it.
Augoski, point six, lamp, you're like, I'm just processing what I think I heard, and first of all, I'm in favor of purchasing the church property. I heard loud and clear what Mr. Brown said about the town hall, and it's time, overdue time to do something with the old town hall. And I think that that will require a financial commitment this year on the part of the town to indicate to the voters that we're ready to act on that. This assumes that we're going to be building a new town hall and planning for a new town hall in the monies that you referenced in, in, earlier in this conversation, appropriation for design and planning. So when you were talking about the appropriation for design and planning, you mentioned the building singular, but not plural, just singular, so I, I assume, well, okay, this is what I'm trying to clarify, whether we're talking about the new town hall, or whether we're talking about something larger than that, and for me, something larger than that at this time would mean, keeping in mind that we're trying to purchase the church property because we kind of needed it, going to build out a cultural center, that something larger than that would be engineering and design plans for the old town hall to start that in motion, okay? Planning in motion at the same time that we're planning the, the new town hall, so we're ready to move on it. And then I'll add to that something I mentioned earlier, that I think the heritage, maybe the historic people, I'm assuming they're going to be doing some hard work and chasing down some grants, and I'll make a safe assumption, having written grants before, that there's going to be a need for match money. And I'm looking at the warrant article that's going to put a hundred thousand dollars into the building capital reserve fund. That might not be enough, as John told me, there are two, two hundred twenty thousand dollars in there now. I would encourage you to think about, think about what Mr. Brown said, okay, if we are ready, if we kind of take an action and say, listen, you know, voters, we're suggesting we move on the new town hall, and at the same time, we're going to move on the, the old town hall and do some design plans, and at the same time, we have volunteers who are going to chase down some money, and we need to be ready for that. So, so plural on the buildings, okay, with, you know, those two buildings in mind at this point in time. Yes, on the church property, because we're, you know, once DOT takes away our hundred and fifty-foot driveway entrance, yeah, okay, that we got, no, we're not going to have adequate parking for whatever is going to happen on the remaining site. And I would like to see from the select board, at this time, this year, a commitment for the whole, okay? And, you know, the library has some capital reserve funds, you know, substantial funds that, that will work for it, but looking at where the rest of the equation sets, yeah, it's, it's time, it's time to move, and it's time to let the public know that we're ready to move on it, and we're not going to sit on it any longer.
Sweet, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Can I respond to it? Please. Yes, Paul, if I said building, it meant buildings. The design would be for the new town hall, renovating the old town hall, renovating the library and the addition.
Yeah.
And also the, the historical design building, so it'd be all those particular things.
It's a complex.
So it's the whole thing.
The thing I've been nervous about the last few weeks is that we'll move on the new town hall, and the rest of it will be kind of, you know, become a footnote. And so this would, this would bring it to the fore.
The other thing, Paul, that you mentioned in terms of grants, they submitted the applications for the town buildings and the town center to the state of New Hampshire Historical, so we can get on a historical register. We're waiting for a letter of termination, which is basically, we've got all your paperwork and it looks fine, so there's not an approval, it's, you know, more, you know, that kind of a check. After it gets on the register, then you can apply for different grants and stuff. They know that they're going-
And, and, and let's assume that there's some, you know, lean times, but there's some big money out there, and you, you land a three hundred thousand dollar grant, you get a fifty percent match upfront cash or in time, so let's not, let's prepare for that.
There's also some grant programs available through the New Hampshire Heritage Foundation that is sent out of bulk today, and there's different grants available for different purposes, and it's not tons of money, but it can also be helpful in terms of determining some of the cost of those particular buildings.
Thank you. Anything else in this area? Julie, also? Let's move on to the next, Bill Booth, building inspector, going to talk about ADA issues in town hall and library and-
Welcome, Bill. Welcome. Good morning. So, two weeks ago, you asked me to compile a list of the immediate needs for four buildings in question, the town hall, the town hall annex, the library, and the museum. And the issues addressed were access issues and life safety issues. Any questions, or would you like me to go through the list?
Go through the list, please.
The town hall, both front and rear accesses would need to be modified, exterior emergency lights on that building, a fire alarm system which would add horn and strobes and pull stations where needed, and interior stairway to add a second handrail. Those were all suggestions made by AG Architects, just with different prices attached to them. They, it can be, those things can be achieved at a more reasonable price. Town hall annex is just modifying the transition between the parking lot and landing, and that's just to allow for wheelchair access, install exterior emergency lights, also, that's pretty much the same on every building, and modifying the interior festive bule, and that would, that modification is just removing that interior wall to allow for a proper clearance. The library, the main door access ramp, to modify that and make that compliance, incompliance, exterior emergency lights, also at exits where needed. Modifying staff locations to achieve proper clearances, that's something that the library staff would have to organize, whether or not it's achievable, but it, no, no outside costs would be incurred by trying to achieve proper clearances within the library. And also providing additional fire alarm and horn strobes. The museum, same thing, the, modify the access ramp to include landings and railings, and install exterior emergency lights at exits where needed.
Do you have an estimated cost?
This is, I don't have that number in front of me, but it's roughly twenty-six-
Twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty thousand.
That's, that's the figure. And that, once again, that wasn't bringing in, getting hard quotes from contractors, that was just, I guess-
I guess the question that we have at, here at this point is, obviously, some of these should be done now and not be put off, as, you know, as Carrie was saying, you know, these things, other things might be two years out, a little bit longer before they get done. The question is, do we have the funds to do them now and move forward? I almost feel like we should, especially the lighting, the poles, the strobes, there's a lot of things that should be done, and we need to provide access for other people of the town to play. What would take this, where would we take the money from, too?
Again, it would be a question of whether these can all come out of the capital, the capital reserve fund.
Mr. Tappin?
I cannot think of any reason why they could.
All improvements associated with the AD.
They're all capital improvements to the building, which is making the building better. So, I can't, can't think of any reason why they wouldn't. I think we need to look hard at what we, what we accomplish and what we should not accomplish. I mean, to be able to run up a ramp inside the building that you might fall through the floor on, is, is not a big jump forward, so, but certainly the lighting, certainly, certainly access to the building and so on, if it's, it makes sense for us to go ahead and do some of those things that are not going to be disturbed again by fixing the bigger issues.
What I'm asking is that they have Bill get us some hard quotes in some of those areas- What I'm asking is, if they have built it as some hard quotes in some of those areas, then the board can at least sit down and prioritize and choose if they need to move forward. John?
I don't have the reference with me, but Department of Justice, in one of their documents where they talked about ADA for governments that are trying to retrofit old buildings, they point out that they recognize that governments have limited funds, and also that governments' funding changes from year to year. And it points out that it is important that governments establish a plan to make the upgrades and then work at making those upgrades as they have money. And so it seems to me that those could perhaps be prioritized, and you have a schedule that, you know, which ones of those would be taken apart or would be no longer valuable when you're going to change a building and things like that, and I can get you that reference.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So what I'd like to see, I have to agree with John at this point, is a prioritization, get some estimated cost, well, HUD cost at this point, and then I recommend each of you which ones you think should be done first, that you feel are the most problematic.
And what John is referring to, he's absolutely right, Department of Justice, if you have a list, then you're showing intent to comply, and certainly retrofitting old buildings, they're not expecting you to be completely compliant all at one time.
And assume you work all that out with the part achievement, respect alums and everything else.
Yeah.
If you can get that done soon, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is this next item here, that we did part of those discussions?
We did six.
You did six.
And six ed, which is, I can't remember now, I'm trying to remember if Mr. Brown wanted to talk about CIP.
Wanted to talk about the CIP. Oh, the CIP.
It must be Mr. Brown, let's talk about the CIP. It's a Mass Texas. All right, I can only take so much of this. So I guess let's see, I can read the good presentation.
We, I worked with Ms. Rossi, and we made some corrections to the CIP based on the various discussions and meetings that we had, so I think at this point, we have a final CIP plan. I believe that Mr. Brown is perhaps going to comment on the connection between the CIP and the master plan. So as referenced in RSA 674-7, titled Capital Improvement Program, in preparing the Capital Improvements Program, the planning board or the Capital Improvement Program Committee shall confer in a manner deemed appropriate by the board or committee with the Board of Select, and Budget Committee, other municipal officials, agencies, the school board of boards, and shall review the recommendations of the master plan in relation to the proposed capital improvement program. That was just some manner of discussion when Mr. Smith was here talking about the capital improvement plan. If there is any connection by statute between the master plan and the CIP.
So I think with this revision that was just made, there were some links put in there that took it to the master plan relative to some ongoing monies appropriated for buildings, et cetera, et cetera. Obviously, I mean, there's more, there's more that can be done when you go through the master plan and, and, but I think it's very important to link the, to link the master plan to the CIP and to manage it. I mean, truly, I, I, the chairman of the CIP, the boss of the CIP, seems to think I'm after it or something, but I'm not. I'm simply trying to link the master plan and our budgeting process so we can run the master plan. If that's the master plan, we need to, we need to know what we're doing and know what we're accomplishing and what we're not. So I think it's a great step, and, you know, we should continue to do that, and look at the master plan very, very carefully and say, how are we going to do this? And manage it. RSAs change, things change every day that affect our ability to comply with the master plan, and we need to know what they are and revise it accordingly, so.
It's good. Thank you very much for moving in the right direction.
Together.
Thank you. Item number seven, select and voting, staff training update.
We did a survey of the departments. We got responses back from everybody except one select person. I will not say his name, but I will look at him. Are you surprised? Well, I'm surprised, but we got eight votes for the goal-setting, action-planning, and times management, and we got two votes for building collaboration and improving volunteerism. I subsequently asked the town administrator to see what dates would be available from the trainer, that, the, geez, that the trainer provided, and it looks like Thursday, February 1st, 2018, from 2:00 to 5:00, they're all available, so if there were any available, I will contact the trainer and engage her for that particular country, if that's acceptable.
Absolutely, just move forward.
I believe the cost is going to be the same as it was at most, which was 600.
Also, it's listed church property update, I guess you kind of did that.
We already did the church property update, but we have a, we have a tour schedule tomorrow, so we're going to get a tour. Like I said, the gentleman from New Hampshire Preservation Line is going to be there looking at the preservation part of it, can we do something with it? The gentleman from Environment Advantage is going to be there looking in terms of giving a cost for the move in the building, and also mitigating anything that they find in terms of hazardous materials in there. So that will be the last part of this particular process, so let's just skip with that. The church was more than happy to continue this particular process, so we'll see what happens from now on. Bring your woolly, it'll be cold, they don't, they don't keep in that building, so.
Thanks.
Bring a flashlight, too, there's no.
Oh, okay. It's great, Clark. Next item, you love the town administrator.
Yeah, we pretty much already covered their solar and public safety complex. We haven't, we haven't, we haven't really had any.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Julie? In terms of, you got those sheets they provided, the sheet, but can you kind of figure out how much the cost would be?
Lost penetration.
How much the cost would be? One, they seem to be focused on revenue, but also can you figure out how much cost avoidance we can do there as well? Because for us, that's the bottom line for us, you know, how much money would we get from utilities for providing the extra power? But two, how much are we going to be doing in terms of cost avoidance, because we're not going to pay enough for those structures.
Well, based on the two schedules that they gave us.
Yeah.
Doing the buyout in six years, at the end of 40 years, is an estimated cumulative revenue of $479,000. And the schedule where we buy it upfront at a cost of $136,537, at the end of 40 years, the anticipated revenue is only $465,305.
But that's the revenue there's, what's the cost avoidance?
Well, they call it revenue, it's not revenue, it's cost avoidance. Yeah.
Because it says, because that really doesn't make any sense, because the difference, but the difference is 21,000, like in year 40 or whatever. That's, that's an awful lot of savings, but.
But, but, I mean, it's not revenue in the terms that you're taking money in, so yes, it's a cost avoidance, but it's, it's going to fall in the column of income.
Of income, yeah. But according to these schedules, it is more advantageous to buy it after six years.
Yeah. Which I kind of, the only real difference is the tax write-off for the, the meter worm.
Right.
But that's not going to be much, you know, they're paying a percent at the most, which is like $40,000. I don't know, I guess I'll have to look at it some more. I'm just thinking that they're going to be, they're going to be selling back excess power so that you don't get as much as they charge you, I understand that.
Right.
But also in terms of cost avoidance, I think it'd be more than that.
You would think that.
Yeah. Something, or, I don't know, just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Was that all?
Oh, what did I miss? I'm sorry.
Did I miss anything? Move the next item, I move to accept the consent agenda is presented.
Consent.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do I do some more?
Okay. Mr. Brown will be deciding.
Oh, yeah.
Y'all need to sign it now, huh? Send it to, send it to, send it to, they're born.
You already signed that.
I already signed that.
You missed one, and the other two missed two.
Do you have a copy of this?
Yep, they sent us one.
Okay.
That was the question, because there's revenue generation, but I guess, this is for us, it's cost avoidance.
Yeah, most because I forgot.
So, that's cost avoidance, but what about the excess that we don't use? What's the?
That is, that's, oh, that's, that's called net meters.
Yeah, because there's nothing in here.
There's nothing about the net meter.
So, because one of the things that you spoke about is in terms of when we change the LED lights, that we reduce it, so we probably have excess, so there's no calculation in terms of what that potentially could be.
Well, right now, the whole array is.
We got it in the notice.
And even with reducing, reducing, changing to the LEDs, we'll get it a lot closer, but there's probably still going to be, but then again, like Karen said, like on Sunday.
Very cool. It's a notice like you're meeting afterwards. Three in one, Mason?
Sure.
Love the hat. More eyes of that.
And I don't know why, I guess it's because it's been changing the amount, it's been reduced a little bit in the last couple of years because of the way the power companies have been.
Would they be willing to give us a quote in terms of, because this building reduces the amount of panels you can put up there. If we went to someplace on the ground, could she give us a quote in terms of how much that would be?
I will call her, I will, I'll call her tomorrow and see if she can start looking into that.
Because that would give us the potential to having more panels, but I understand that there's additional cost to set it up, but.
Yeah. I don't know how much more the cost is.
Yep.
Hopefully, it's less. I don't know which one. Sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But I don't know if not replacing the roof means you're going to keep having the same problems anyway.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
I've got that. If you want, if you want to take a copy.
Just one idea, right? In terms of when you have another roof. One of the reasons for that is for the, all this note to come on, that's basically what happens with solar.
Oh, it comes off, too?
Yeah.
There's so many weird angles.
That's the whole problem.
It's just a bunch are getting off the board.
Thank you very much. I see that I was promoted to top on the list.
I saw that, I'm not going to say.
I like that.
It's okay.
I don't know.
His name is a top line.
I don't understand. Who's in charge of who goes where, right? That's ridiculous.
Get straight in the side, that's all right. There's a dumping over here.
It's on there. You're going to make your kombis banana crop.
You going somewhere?
You're going to be your kombis banana crop.
Yeah, there you go.
Don't laugh. You can't win if you don't have one.
That's true, that's true.
He's laughing now. I suppose tomorrow he's.
You won't be here.
We have booked it over.
Well, I think we should postpone as late as possible, because then they can't buy the ticket, because you know if they win, they're going to quit their job.
That's right. I like that, that's pretty good.
Can I ask the chairman how his gavel's working out?
I'd say it works out very fine. As long as I don't get too attention-driven, I'm absolutely fine.
How you what?
My gavel. I don't want to think this is the thing I'm supposed to hit over here, cause it's damage, huh? If I whack this thing? Actually, it needs something that has like a spring on it, so you whack it, and it takes the impact off of it.
He's supposed to make himself out of the tree.
Yeah, we're supposed to be getting an animal made for this, huh?
Block.
Us the block. The block. I call it an animal.
An animal.
Okay. Very well.
Yes. The intention is, when we get somebody to move the bench out of the mass tree, we'll get them to make a block.
Oh, that's right, that's right. You are correct.
And we'll put a little thing on the bottom that says, made from the 2016 mass tree.
Yeah, that'd be really nice.
We've got more really cold weather coming.
And a blizzard on Thursday.
Yeah.
Tomorrow's going to be high 24.
Yes, and now the next day it goes down to like minus 12. I heard several towns have warming centers, I was wondering, have we ever considered a warming center as part of the EOC?
Town hall.
No, I'm serious.
What, you don't want in the town hall, it's not warm air. It's 67 there.
No, I mean, that's what, what the, what the, downstairs should be, guys, or it's more the EOC is a warming center, sure that feels a bit.
Item 10, let's move, I'd move to go to non-public section of New Hampshire RC 91-8, call it 311, a personnel, is there a second? Go, Paul, please, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. LaCorte, yes. Motion carries. Town administrator, will you do this?
What do we need 1-1 for? What's that? Nothing, I.
We don't. Not yet, any.
So, just a thought, so.
Actually, the land that adjacent to me is town owned land. It's a swamp.
Oh.
That water's just back near your property, right?
Yeah.
Right? It's back, it kinda like goes around the edge of your property?
Yeah.
We've actually talked about offering to buy it from the town.
Yeah.
It's seventeen point eight acres.
Yes, but it's a swamp.
And there's another, there's another rectangular piece out there.
About ten acres.
About ten acres, yeah. It bucks the Lee line.
Was it town-owned?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It picked in nineteen eighty, somewhere around there, early eighties.
Yeah. It's, it's almost entirely swamp.
Yeah. You got a one-twenty-five backwash area. If you're going off the right side, it's a little island on the left, there's all that backwash that's in there.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it.
So, what's the process for us to get rid of some of those things? Do we have to ask the legislative body, or can we do it ourselves?
No.
We have authority. I think we have authority to do that.
I, I wanna double-check. You might have the authority to do it if we acquired it by tax deed.
Which I think that property was, by tax.
Yeah, it was.
My understanding is, it was given to the town in lieu of taxes?
Is that the same thing?
I, I don't know.
Is that something we can ask the town administrator to check into?
Yeah.
And maybe provide us with a list, maybe that we can ask the Conservation Commission their opinion? Just if we can get it on the tax roll, even if we get something, it's better than.
The thing is, is what they tend to use it for, I know it's like a green path for animals and stuff, because it's kind of contiguous and that backwater area that goes off somewhere over there by a tuckaway or something.
You can't build on it.
No, no. It's landlocked and it's.
When they gave it to the town, they, they surveyed some straight lines that essentially skirted the dry, the dry land.
Yeah.
And if you were to walk that boundary, there are little places where it's dry and then it's wet for a long distance, and then a little bit that's dry.
Because I remember the piece that's next to me, which is that rectangular piece that Snively owned it, it, it's just basically wet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People go hunting back there for deer and stuff.
Well, if there's a value to the town, it's fine, but if there's no value to the town, why are we still holding on?
Exactly.
That's, that's my whole issue. As you can see, that's what I do in my spare time.
Well, I mean, we may be holding on to it because we want to have twenty-five percent conserved slash undeveloped land.
I don't know. Well, that doesn't change unless, if we sold it, we sold it with it. Well, if you can't build on it anyways.
Yeah, it's a swamp.
And you can't even sell it to get rid of, you know? Because then it still becomes conserved, but.
Well, the thing, yeah, it's like anything else, it's conserved because you can't do anything with it. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Brown? Absolutely not. He's ready. All right, Denise, you ready?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, hold it.
Oh, yeah.